So what are you doing on temperature wise?
I'm good.
Ready to go? All right, call the meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Oak Ridge City Council. We're at Oak Ridge City Hall. It's October 3rd at 6:00 PM. First of all, business is budgeted, please.
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which is saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the
Thank you. Jackie, could you call the role, please?
Yes. Counselor Coker.
He's excused.
Counselor Bjornson.
Here.
Counselor Charman.
Here.
Counselor Brewer.
Yeah.
Mayor Kutchin.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Yeah.
Counselor Hollitt.
Might be a little late on call.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Moving on to item four, which is additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. Any counselors have any recommended adjustments to the agenda? James, nothing? Okay, looks good to me, too. Public comment will start in the room. Any public comment in the room?
I would like to remind everyone about Friday day.
If you can identify yourself. Identify yourself, please.
The camera. Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone about Friday day tomorrow. It's just funny that we were had. We're gathering at the market six for photo. Right. For call last year, we gathered over actually that. We're smelling around like what happened? Just for fun. And then it's a national event, worldwide event, started in Lansing, Michigan, about 10 years. So actually fun. I have notified some of the businesses and they're all over it, especially the Bohemia shop resale shop down on Highway 58. They have a lot of that stuff in case you're attached or whatever.
To search my closet. All right. Online, is there any public comment online? Back to the room, anyone in the room, last chance on in the room or online? Here and then we'll move on. Item six, that's mayor comments, announcements, proclamations, a couple here. First, if you weren't aware, the IMT, the Eastern Area IMT departed on Tuesday night and handed it over to the local district. There's still some contracted resources in the area and you'll see them. They did move out of the OIP lots that were leased, right, James? They're done.
Except for the new block.
Right. And they still are some people at the fire camp. So the, I guess the district ranger will be managing the effort with his folks. So just know that. And there are some people in town and continue to give them their thanks that they've heard nothing but great things from the citizens here. So that's a, that's a good news story. And one other thing is they they assumed command of all the fires that were they initially had except for the red fire, which got spun off to the shoots county. And that's being handled locally up near Crescent Lake. So the 208, which is really the fire of concern, plus all the other ones that are contained and is smoldering. So but expect them to stay on the landscape for the near future. We've had two town hall meetings concerning the charter update. It's been going to the, going to the polls as well as star voting. There's another one, though. October 21st at 6:00 PM, and that's here at City Hall again, James. Any feedback on the two that have?
Pretty positive.
Good. Okay, so yeah, October 21st, come on out and learn about those two items. Catholic Community Services coming to Oak Ridge, October 21st from two to four at seven, six, four, nine, nine, Rose Street. Is that a house or is that just a?
Yeah, that's the it's family resource center.
Okay, yeah, by the school. Yep. All services are free. They can help you with ordering or paying for birth certificates, access to a mini clothing closet, sign up for home visiting family self sufficiency program. And bus passes are being handed out. So there's a number here you can call to reserve if you're so inclined, and that will be available in the forum. Also, Wednesday, October 9th, 6 to 8:00 PM is the city council candidates forum. Being hosted by I think it's combination Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters. Is that correct? And I don't know what the attendance will be, but I know that the candidates, just to refresh your memory. Marty Scott, Kelly Brewer, Chrissy Hollitt, B. Haver, Aaron Davis are all vying for a four-year seat. And voters will be able to vote for three of those individuals. Candidates vying for a two-year seat where voters can vote for one is Thaddeus Carter and Dan Barkley. So I don't know who will be in the room on Wednesday, but hopefully all of them, but we'll see who is able to make it. And I think that's all the announcements I have made. So move on to item seven, which is council comments, announcements. Anyone? Okay. I had to make consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I'm to approve the consent agenda.
Wait a second. Motion made by Counselor Brewer, second by Counselor Charman. Any opposed to the motion? All right, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine is appointments. They're done tonight. 10, business from the city council. 10.1, Lane County Commissioners Meeting Regarding TV Butte Appeal, October 15th at 1:30 PM. James?
All right, so council will call. They voted unanimously to send a letter of opposition to the opposed TV view project rezoning. And at the county planning commission level, it's also unanimous vote to deny their application. So that's good news. It's been a deal to the county commissioners. They're meeting on Tuesday afternoon in that one PM. That hearing. There is a bus that's going to be provided for any citizens interested in attending that. A Bronfire Field is going to be used as a bus to do that. I don't know the details, but it should just Google, say, TV view of all the organizers. They're right to that. I am planning on attending and will read excerpts from the letter that was already moved by council. To make sure it's appropriate. I couldn't make much else to add, but anybody has suggestions on that. Probably send not one, because I must have discussion about before this ends in the city using excerpts from the letter.
Any questions for James on this? Please.
I have a question, but a comment. I am not sure that everyone's familiar, but there is another hearing also on October 8th. For the as very similar where they're trying to change the zoning for the land that it came bought up by our Oak Ridge Airport. They're trying to get it for residential. I'll be attending that one. I'm going to be able. I'll be attending the TV view. I don't know if I can attend the other one yet. I miss that one, don't want to do.
James, have they, has the county put out the sort of the packet for that meeting on the 15th?
Tonight.
And that's a
No, yeah, a big, I haven't seen it yet. Last time I checked, that was three days ago. I'll send that out.
Yeah, should be able to see what's changed, is anything. And the only, the thing that I would really, because Lane County has skin in the game on it, I would highlight the the old landfill and the hazard there to the water source, because Lane County operated that for a while. So they could easily become a third party if something went wrong. All right. Any other questions for James? All right. Moving on to item 10.2, that's the Ridgeline Magazine RTMP funding request, James.
We've approved the consent agenda.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, it's gone. All right. Okay, so Ridgeline Magazine is a brand new magazine for outdoor recreation to be throughout the South Atlantic Valley. Pretty impressive magazine. The editor and creator, Ted Sheldon, what he is online, and yes, he is answering questions. Has requested $2,000 RTMD funding to help Kickstarter, basically. He's planning to do four issues per year. Big glossy magazine. In exchange for the funding, he is willing to give us a full page ad, which would normally cost about $2,000. So so he's willing to throw that in exchange for funding. It will be the inside front cover of two issues. The other two issues will be somewhere. So this was presented to the RTMP TRT Committee. Last meeting, they voted unanimously recommend approving all requested amount, $1,000. Funds. Again, our editor, Ted Sheldon is available. On me. That is the recommendations.
Okay, so I hear a motion on this.
I'll make a motion.
Counselor Hall.
I move to approve $2,000 in RTMP funding to Ridgeline Magazine.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Counselor Hall, second by Counselor Kenyon. Any discussion or questions of please?
Where are we with our RTMP right now, balance wise?
We haven't spent any for this year. So we've got about 12,000.
Oh, we did have a couple of events that are already proved up for each.
I think that's the RT.
Oh. You're right, you're right.
Any other questions, James, or Chad? James, this is the first edition of this magazine, is that correct? So would it kind of like cascades with Traveling County, that magazine? Would the, the promise be put to paper about the ads in return for the $2,000?
Yeah. I like some best contract.
Yeah. And should it not ever go to print, the money gets returned?
Yeah, Chad, is that agreeable to you if for some reason you're not able to go to the print with the city received?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks, Chad. Any other questions or we go to a vote? All right, the motion was to approve $2,000 in RTMP funding to Ridgeline Magazine. Deck, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Kutchin.
Aye.
Counselor Brewer.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to 10.3, and that's review of surplus properties, James.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, at the last council meeting, council requested to be able to review the properties that council has already prepared surplus. Their potential sale or lease. So I provided those previous resolutions that were passed. So council and you then changes are necessary to that additional resolution to remove properties to some of that.
Given there's no really recommended motion that we're looking for here, we'll go into discussion, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, would we need to review or to revise the resolution to take things off that are sold?
No.
Yeah, so the old public workshop is on here. And the Douglas Street address did not sell also.
But I can't, I can't, because the resolution passed in this form, I can't.
Yeah.
Should we maybe do a motion then to remove all the properties that have sold?
I don't think it's necessary, because it is an assumption.
Since we've already sold it.
And you can't really
Can't sell it again.
You're making a motion to revise our resolution that passed. I don't, I don't know. Probably just leave it that way. And then next time we have to go through a surplus property list, we can update it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be that would be a huge hassle if cities had, especially big cities, if they had to do a new revolution every single time, if they had hundreds of property. But it's just, it's legally and physically impossible for us to sell a property we already sold.
Okay.
Counselor turn.
As far as like the rail line, each rail line, north of each. Are we, so I know those won't need be lot lines adjusted, broken up, or whatever exactly needs to be done or sell those. Is that something that they possibly makes offer? Or is that something that we need to take here ahead of time? Because that work. There's some things to do. They have the survey. So it can't, like currently it can't be listed.
Well, it's still listed, but we just tell them that they're going to hear that from council from a realtor record. Hold on, we need to do something, we need to adjust. So there was really other ones like that.
Well, a little Texas, unless someone wanted to come in and buy the entire thing. Counselor Kenyon.
Wasn't there also an issue with the property that is the old battery? Or is that that
Yes.
rail line?
The police, the police did not want to dispose of that. They have no place to store their material.
But they would for the right price. If someone's willing to give us enough money to build something, we could. Someone unlikely, but somebody wants property right on here. Trains spotted.
Well, I just wanted to make sure we don't list that property which they are.
Well, and it gets to what I, my question was, was that, you know, the surplus list wasn't really a huge problem that I saw, but what was a problem was the communications between city staff and the Realtor of Record regarding list prices and maybe some things that, that so I just don't know how we, this, whatever we do here is not going to fix that. But I don't know how we fix that problem of, of making sure that the list prices, I know we've got this new Realtor of Record is probably going to do a scrub of all the properties and come to you with a list of recommended list prices.
Okay, so we'll be up to review that.
And at the same time, we can probably say, okay, maybe that one of those properties doesn't want to, we don't want to list it right now for some reason we don't want to. So do you need a motion? Would that automatically bring it back to us once you have a list price recommendation from the Realtor of Record?
Yeah, I'll definitely bring that.
Okay. Great. Any other questions on this surplus list? Okay. Moving on, item 11, that's business from the city administrator, 11.1, University of Oregon. See what SCYP kickoff luncheon, October 15th at 12:00 noon. James?
Right, so we have a lot of projects going on with the University of Oregon.
I'm sorry, could you first for the crowd, tell them what that SCYB is?
Yes, so that's the white of these events for the state will see your program. Participate with the university board in the next few years, where the university board classes and schools, law school. UBM, under Red, MBA is what, name it. Five classes filmed this year. Three, that's there. And they're having a kickoff at the University of Oregon. Officials. For city officials. To invite counselors and Kings, or something, mayor send up.
Send, send up.
Review send up. And you know, it's not. I think we could have more than three, because we won't be assessing business.
No decisions being made.
Right.
And this is right aboard the but they're relative close by.
Yep. Any questions, James, on this? So this is just the city of Oak Ridge, this kickoff. There's no other cities that are involved in this program? Okay, perfect. All right, 11.2 is the League of Oregon Cities Voting Member.
Right, so we need to point someone to be the city's voting representative to leave aboard the cities for their annual business meeting, which is on Saturday, October 19th at 11:00 AM. They will have that business meeting, they're going to elect maybe new board of directors. That also should propose amendments to the LAIC constitution. Over the mayor sits on keyword that nothing be controversial about this. Something impressive about there.
Yeah, if anyone's willing to do it, I'm going to bend, but I can't vote because I'm serving as an interim director because of the the recall that happened in Cottage Grove. One of the people that was recalled was a member of the board, and so they wanted someone from the same district. So they asked me to sit in temporarily until the end of the year. So I can't necessarily vote. So I appreciate if another counselor could step up and just dial into that meeting and ask vote for the city.
I can do it. I've done it three times before. That's no problem.
Great.
That was October 19th.
11:00 AM.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
It sounds like we got somebody, James. Do you want a motion on this or we good?
I think we need a motion.
Unless, let's just say, does anybody oppose to Counselor Hollitt being the voting members? All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Hall. All right, moving on to 11.3, political signs issue update, James.
All right, so stats update on the political signed oversized letters have been sent to the Artic and Maine. Also to get our all regarding news, political signs of oversight. Consultation of the city attorney. Sent these out to be then 10 days from the day of the third. So they have to be taken out by 9:00 AM on Monday, October 7th. Take it out or trim it down to size. So city crews will go and measure then if they're still up. Move them. They are unless, of course, they feel the planning commission that is done after the public hearing. Discuss that and then a eminence as of so same for a letter as well. For 10 days. Followed with a
Questions on that, anyone? I did have one, Jay. Okay, go ahead, please.
Sorry, I do. I'm concerned about the sign that says better for Oak Ridge. I just have seen no no I don't believe it's a political sign. It has no advertisement for a candidate or a measure. So I'm not even sure. I mean, I know that originally it was intended to have stuff added to it, but it still hasn't, and I don't understand why it wouldn't fall under. This sign doesn't apply.
Well, it is a political sign. From my letter, we found a video on Facebook and YouTube. There's a song connected to the letter that makes pretty good political. Mr. Robbins not denied that. And I have seen him take action on at least one side to trim down 158. But as we told you in the letter, it's supporting candidates. So the candidates were about measure support. It's beyond the sign. But ours on the code is not dictate how large the letter stuff will be. So write the names with a pen. And suffice. If he, if he wants it to be bigger than the six square feet. So if he has two candidates, two measures, it's 12 square feet, three, 18, etc. So we will expect them on Monday.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
So James, this, these letters are a result of a citizen complaint driven?
Oh.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, are all candidates now made aware of the regulations surrounding campaign signs, including putting being, not being posted on public rights of way near stop signs or street signs?
Oh, all candidates? No. I consider certain questions. I sent the zoning code to
I just, I just think it might make, make your life easier if they all knew, so you didn't have to basically get future complaints. And then so hypothetically, if a citizen wrote a complaint about a zoning violation on a residence. Let's say they had a structure that wasn't permitted use at a certain zoning, or they had an ADU that was not conforming. You would investigate that, and if it was found to be true, then you would send a letter like this to that individual. Okay. And then so let's assume you had two houses right next to each other with fences that were both out of code. And someone reported the one fence. So that process would go for that one person. Right?
Yeah.
And, and the next door neighbor with the very same fence just gets to keep it. You understand the, the perception there, yeah.
So we know we are complaint here, then. And I tell us something that
Yeah, sure. So interestingly enough, if you had, using that citizen-driven complaints, you had a cadre of citizens that were well-versed in ordinance 874, the land use ordinance, and they all started filing complaints. And they came to the city, and obviously you and Rick would be number one, very busy, but you, your life would somewhat be easier because someone's finding those violations for you if they're really accurate, then. Really accurate, then.
Yes, it's a blessing to have a first, yeah. We would, we would, it would bomb down the system.
Yeah, sure would. Enforcing the ordinance, yep, okay. Thanks for that.
Uh, Mayor, Chief Martin, and.
Dave.
I can allude to that a little bit, how if it came to us, how we would handle it, and I would say depends. Uh, first source of contact for us would usually be trying to contact the person and talk to them and because our job is to gain compliance, so. If we could just talk to somebody that gained compliance, then we take care of that, there are certain ordinances that say that people have to get a letter before they're cited. Or before there's any type of abatement, so. There is a few things that would just depend on, so, and it would depend on, uh. If the citizen was complying or not as well.
Thanks for that, chief. And it's a very specific process for land use, right? Any other questions on this before we move on? All right, eleven point four, that's other city business and updates, James.
All right, um, few things, um. We had our C I S. Inspection. Policies procedures, etc. to pass, uh, but they're. Remember of policy and stuff that. Update. Stuff working and. Also wanted to ask that Jake, uh, the boy, the joy. Missed that here, when something, uh. Is elected to be our campaign manager. Like better term, they'll get up. Uh, vote information on both of the valid measures. So they are actually. He and volunteers are going to do it for right now. See, they may not be doing that. Meeting meetings between now and election day. So if the seat folks walk around, that's what they're giving personal information. Always thought maybe we should announce in public that. We were in error about the amount that we received. Off by a million dollars, no, no big deal, it's three point seven here, three point seven. That's my fault, I didn't get that correct. But if he sits in error, we. Good way to that.
So that should bring some total somewhere near six million dollars across the board. Great.
So when do we get to start on work?
Bring unfortunately. The the group. Plus, some some work is already starting to work. In the winter, we'll we'll be doing. Removing some asbestos. The material, well. It's environmental assessments. Which, uh. We'll get to later as a grant, if you'd like, if you'd like, we'll be asking permission. Way on that, that's. I'm through the parks commission, so. That's gonna include the WAC and parks. Brownsville. Six three.
All right, any other questions to James? When we move on? All right, item twelve, uh, nothing was moved, consent agenda thirteen, there were no ordinance or resolutions today, resolutions, uh, no public hearings. And the department staff, board, committee, commission reports, uh, item fifteen point one is the admin committee councillor Kenyon.
Yes, uh, we met. And reviewed and worked on making updates on. Some city forums, but I cannot remember exactly which one. Uh, it'll be an ongoing process, we have a list of several forums that need to be worked on, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to councillor Kenyon?
Maybe. Getting them into an actual PDF form or. Not a print and scanned in.
Right. Perfect.
Those driving, that's. Because you can't do, you can't do fine.
I know, you can't do.
You can't search for text in any forms.
Unless you have a high-end Adobe.
Yeah.
All right, uh, fifteen point two, Public Safety Committee, councillor Covert, I'm here, James, were you or Chief Martin there?
Yeah, I was there, uh, last week, uh, we discussed, uh, May's. Future involvement. With the one of the U O classes that is going to be putting together the community service program, so that would be another option for, we just support to. Service. The group of fines. So we've been writing people also excited about that program. Public safety is gonna help with that. And we also discussed the. A recent success of utilization of the. I always want to call it the hoods, but it's not the hoods, it's the the. Crisis Response Team. It actually come out a couple of times already. To help police and fire with folks. Crisis. They're very limited on staff, but. Standing as they were, you know, within an hour or so, helped out.
Councillor Kenyon.
Yeah, about the program, I know that maybe two years ago. The program. For community service got started. And, uh, so I'm wondering. Why we're starting again.
I don't think you've had it for years.
My husband was actually coordinating with Michael McPherson from the police department. To, uh, arrange for. Public ser- service for people that needed to work out. Yeah.
I know that the county has sometimes assigned community service to county circuit for. As a science of community service that was somewhat overseen by Michael McPherson, but our unit board had had a program.
Oh, this is. Okay. Good.
Uh, chief, any feedback from those crisis response teams, were you able to observe any of that?
Uh, other than officers so far have had mostly positive remarks about it.
Actually. All right, moving on to fifteen point three, that's the Charter Review Subcommittee, councillor Kenyon.
Yes, actually, uh, the Charter Review Subcommittee isn't meeting anymore, but we have held. The two recent town hall meetings, and we are holding the third. On October twenty first. Six P M here at City Hall. Um. I don't, I don't think the committee, I don't know if we're going formally.
Disestablish the committee?
Establish it or not, but it's, there's no longer. Unless it doesn't pass and someone wants to start.
That'd be a whole new effort.
Yeah. But, yeah, we could probably disassemble that committee.
Um. All right, so. If you can make a motion, we disestablished the Charter Review Subcommittee. Following the October twenty first, uh, town hall.
Okay.
Your second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on that?
It's something that we should wait till after the election to do, just in case.
Nothing's gonna, nothing's gonna happen, it's out of your hands, really.
Curious, if it's something that. If it doesn't hypothetically pass. We would just start a new committee if we wanted to redo it, so.
I think it'd be a whole new effort, you know?
Yeah, I think it would start again.
And that there would be a. Probably you want the new council as well.
Got it, okay.
All right, Jackie, would you go for a vote, please?
Councillor Charman.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Councillor Brewer.
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously, um, moving on to fifteen point four, that's the Library Board, councillor Charman. Anyone else there, James, outside? In the staff? Okay. Move on, fifteen point five. O D F, James?
Right, um. Kind of short meeting, just do some updates, so talked about, uh, two brothers. Main Street. Violation grant efforts. Uh, which are ongoing, we also heard presentation from the Oak Ridge School District regarding their five-year strategic plan. It's a session. And we back. School district still see input. Something that wants to look at their five-year strategic plan. Super on the website, point of that super amended. But we were great rest there. All right.
Okay. Uh, fifteen point six is the R T N B T R T Committee, councillor Kenyon.
Yes, uh, we met and we reviewed and approved the recommendation. For the Ridgeline magazine to be forwarded to council, we also reviewed our twenty-four, twenty-five budget for that fund. In order to. One of our goals in the committee is to kind of, um. Reestablish. What kind of routine and regular, um. Funding requests we anticipate. In order to, um. You know, just really have a our heads wrapped around the whole fund. So we did discover there was a couple of, um. Things potentially misquoted in the financials. And, uh, Melody Cornelius, our group finance director was at the meeting. And Big Boi, she was right on it, she actually went out of the room and fixed a couple of things while we were in the meeting. And she's gonna, um. Just get it all cleaned up and re-present it to us again in our next meeting. It'll be in November, we are skipping our over meeting. Because. We decided to skip it. What?
And there's no application.
And there's no applications to review, so we will be meeting again in November.
Yeah. Questions of councillor Kenyon on this? All right, fifteen point seven is the planning commission, Rick is.
Yeah, yeah, we should met to have a work session where we discussed the hazard assessment, uh, which were the options for the, uh. National Fluke Native Species Integration Act. So. Over. You then, what was required to have that assessment, um, and next thing would review the molecules. Prepare to. Make the recommendation there.
Right. Any questions or Rick on this? Yeah. Next is fifteen point eight, Parks and Community Services Committee, Rick or councillor Charman?
So we assessed, um. That's what went on, uh, at one past. The pump. Back geotech report, um. And. We learned part, which you play at next steps, we garden. And I would like to come back to the geotech report was not favorable, it came back with, um. Basically soft soil because of the, you know, no ponds. It would be very costly, very costly to put pump back from that location. Um, during the meeting, discussion was involved around, um. We're going back to the drawn location, but not to pilot project. If you want to move forward with the project, you're just reassessing locations. So, another thing that I'll be bringing out of this, we'll discuss the possibility of. Second community government and then we park, I'll be bringing that to you guys, or take more. Information on that. And since we're talking works, uh. There's two. Grants that were requesting, uh, both of them are being led by some, uh, citizens, they're doing most of heavy lifting. For us, the first one is the community forestry program, uh, which would be a tree inventory, uh, which would give us a urban forestry master plan. A tree candidacy assessment and a local tree ordinance and a plan for, um, continuation of new planting of trees as they, as they age out. That's one thing that. Will hopefully, with your guys' blessings, we could apply for that grant. And the other one is a brownfield assessment for, um, this one is. At the moment evolving, but nonetheless, the idea is to assess, uh, ground field potentials at the. O I P mill or lot thirty-nine, which is a park. Um, inside. And and ponds, uh, the fire pond and a piece of the one that's there, whether it's, uh, potentially an oil. So it's another one that we're looking, resting on or applying that grant as well. And again, both of those are being, the heavy lifts are being done by. Of citizens, so if you see Heather or Gwen, uh, in the public, should I give them a big thank you? They are awesome.
Yes. Um, the. The Geo, um.
Okay.
Thank you, Geo Tech studied a report, um, from the O I P, and it's super unfortunate, are you guys still looking at the O I P for a location or like completely?
Completely different.
Do you have any thoughts or maybe some ideas of where?
We think it would fit work with, uh, some minor.
Where?
Or park.
Parks Park.
The WAC.
Oh, the WAC, oh, the park right there, okay.
So with some minor, the current thought process is with some minor alterations to the skate park location, and there's a small, um. It. Place structure, we can spread those part, we could possibly fit in that location. And with the same dimensions as what we proposed at, um. O I P. And it's more centrally located, um, it's the the downside is is, um. It it's location, it isn't as attractive for attracting outside. But that doesn't mean it's a deal breaker on that one, it's just not as. Great, but the positive side of that is with the more centrally located for community members. So.
I may, I'm sorry, I just saw from one thirty minutes before the meeting, and she mentioned that with the Brownsville stuff. There's potential that it could be remediated. It would be. Removing the. That. There. Potential. Potential that it's still be going here that's remedied.
Oh. Gotcha, but that's the timeframes are, it's so, so different on those two, yes, but what I definitely didn't say is if you get round to assessment on the O I P ponds. And then that round to the second goes into a planning phase, and then into the end of the implementation phase, soils that caused the. Native geotech study would be replaced or removed, so then after that, it would be a new conversation. Uh, but the timing are.
It seems like you still have a high water table then.
I'm sorry.
It seems like you would still have a high water table.
Depending on how well the soils compacted, depending on what the, um, because I I would assume with the, if we do brownfield plan of the ponds. Um, there's no guarantee that they're going to be the same footprint as they are today. So they could be smaller, they could be larger, they could be.
That's okay.
Um, what was the other grant you were talking about applying for a community?
Urban community forestry program, so it's basically to assess, uh. The trees that we have in our right of way in our parks and city properties. Um, and put forth a a plan for a master plan for the urban forestry. That would include the trees in our parks, that would include, uh, replacements of growing or new trees as they die out. Um, best practices, it would also provide us with the tree ordinance, which I think is very important because. Um, a lot is restrictive, I do think we need something in place because we do it with a lot of trees that end up damaging our infrastructure. So basically, uh, examples of the tree orders would say, um, you're not allowed to plant a dozen fir in the front. Portion of your property if there's a water flow underneath it. So, uh, those type of trees can definitely be put in your backyard as long as you don't bug right away. So there's a couple of different aspects to that one, that's one of the aspects, the other is, um. Lots here generals, and we could really. Use more information from the specialists, and we have trees dying out in all of our parks, and we want to be able to. Check them and replace them as time goes on, and that is another aspect of it as well.
Okay, so if it then a then a community forest, it's a. Forest.
Urban community forest program.
Urban, yeah, okay.
And, yeah, so urban, you know, for it's so interchangeable, but yes, it is a urban forestry program. Maybe for, they're trying to.
Rick, would it incorporate the D E Q, uh. River water cooling or heating issue?
Yes, yes, maybe bring that up with what we space out now, yes, it's actually absolutely part of the stormwater management, it's tied in that as well because, um. One of our tasks for. One of our tasks for stormwater management is to plant in the riparian area, riparian areas, that area that's up. Close to streams and rivers. The idea and concept behind it is if we provide more shade for our shore water that flows back in the rivers, it will cool that stormwater. And, um, bring it back to the temperature that's beneficial for the fish. So that's one of the things we're supposed to be already doing and we, we do that in, in correlation with the tree planting festival. And we check that box every year when the princesses plant out of O I P. That's, that it's tied into our form of management plan. At this one, we have a, a handful of outfalls, one of them is south of, or. Um. I'm always blanking on that, the trail park, same incident Paul, we did ten years ago, we have an outfall there.
Is there?
No, no, uh but in that joint, we said, we have a pretty large outfall, uh where the leaves are, um. Forty eight inch pipe and it just opens to the air. With that area is a great example of places we plant trees and then that's about quarter mile span. We, the idea is that's what you know. So that, yes, that is another aspect of it as well.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks. And the, you know, the, the pump track, the only thought would be maybe, uh. One of the areas you could probably look at is partition off a little chunk of Little Texas, maybe combine it with the trail that. Supposed to go down the rail.
Ooh. Yes, absolutely could.
Um might be some barriers there, but just keep it one of the options.
I think transportation in and out.
Yeah.
It. No, that's, that's.
Yeah. All right, uh fifty, yeah, go ahead.
If, if possible, if you have some with it. We were requesting a motion to give a. Apply for the Brownsfield and the urban community program grant.
Uh, all right, I'll make a motion to, uh, direct the city staff to, or permit the city staff to apply. For the Brownsfield and.
Urban community.
Urban. Community. Forest. Grants.
What is happening?
Oh, she's. Chief, pardon, can you view yourself?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on, I'm in the staff to do that? Right?
Actually, I did have a question, you know, how? How much, um, you'd be applying for each of those?
Not, we are, we sent out, uh, rough estimates to arbiters for that one, uh, the deadline for their return for their. Proposals is smart. So I don't think that could have.
The Brownsfield assessment has a max of five hundred K. And then the follow-on mitigation effort construction would be much more than that, it's, yeah. All right, uh Jackie, as you get it, the motion was to allow or permit the city staff to apply for the Brownsfield and. Community forest, no, urban, urban community forest grant. Any, uh? Uh to call for a vote, please, Jackie.
Okay, who seconded?
That was Counselor Brewer.
Brewer. Okay, Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Hollit.
Aye.
Counselor Brewer.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to, if, is there something else, James?
Yeah, one more, yeah, sure. So one of the things coming, uh, around, um, that is where the discussion is gonna, uh, come to the Parks Development Committee. But it's a worthy, you guys, um, knowledge beforehand. The gentile order of reason deteriorating faster than what we had anticipated. And we may need to do something sooner or later, and unfortunately, that thing that we may need to do, the exposure. Um, for a certain, sorry, talking about closing an army path. Which are kind of confused on how they can do that, but nonetheless. That's what we're hearing, so, um. Again, I just, ends up, something coming out of pipeline is. That bridge is deteriorating faster than what we can. Uh, that's worst case scenario. That is worst case, yeah. But, but Tuesday morning, we, we have a meeting with, uh, Forest Service. And Monty Canard, volunteers who have an Alaska insomniac. Uh to inspect the bridge and see if we can make the repairs. Using, uh, donated labor from the community. Will these replace the, which public some boards. Now, we just need to see if it's, uh. It's impossible.
Counselor Kenyon.
Um, isn't this? Didn't we have a grant within the last year or so to replace some boards and?
Right, so we should have the money to fix awards July, uh, twenty twenty. Yeah, so we did the two-year, uh, capital fund. We did, uh, the goal was twenty K, ten K this year, ten K next.
Budgeted for it.
We budgeted, yeah. So we can't touch that money until. I guess for that. Until comes, we get a second ten K.
You can't spend the first ten K when you have it already?
We could do, well, we could potentially, right, there are, yeah, so if somebody came up, who else is a here is ten grand, put max, max, with the ten grand. We could go through the process of getting that money, but as far as. Staff being able to spend that money, that's no. They have to back you guys for approval for us to access the ten Ks in there right now.
Any other questions? So. Is twenty K what it would take to fix it from your estimates or?
The quote I got was, uh, fifteen eight, fifteen eight eighty. Put it number. Now it's for pressure treated.
Not the labor, not the labor.
No, not the labor, so the labor was gonna, it covers the rest of the, the. It's not a lot, but something four hundred and plus, we just figured we'd be on the back of fellow work staff.
So this group you have that's talking about perhaps donating some time. If they did that work with the city engineer to come in behind and just kind of make sure that. It's a safe.
Yeah, that's why we're meeting with Forest Service. On Tuesday.
It's just a critical connection to the.
Yeah.
Forest Service lands, I'd hate to see.
Thank you. And I just want to share my frustration with the Forest Service as far as their expanding the job and work on the other side, no connectivity. Um, that is our facility and your facility, I wish it would be a little bit better. That's what it is and to your, I'm done the, bringing the, um, engineer. If we go part for part with exact replacement, we don't need bringing it here and that's pressure treated. The number that we're talking about is gonna be cedar, that's. So that's where we have to also bring in, in. The nods was part for part.
Yeah. So, right now, if we had a council motion to use the, not today, but if we council moved to spend ten K, it's already been set aside. We'd be short eight thousand dollars essentially. In pressure treated lumber.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
That did.
All right. Uh. Fifteen point nine is the Wax Subcommittee Counselor Pollitt.
Uh, we didn't have a meeting last month. Unless James has anything he wants to report.
Uh, no.
Thanks.
Uh fifteen point one zero is the Wax Funding Committee, so I dialed in from the highway and I only got about every third word, you were not that many, were you, Jim?
No, that's the one that did transfer over to your channel.
Right, so the only thing I can tell you though is we recently had a meeting following that and with a small group. That, uh, looked at the Brownsfield Grant and, uh. Went over that and sort of doled out responsibilities to this group that's gonna put this grant together, so. Uh but it was a, it's a good, good meeting and, uh. Look forward to being able to, uh, put, get that application together. Uh. That's everything on the regular agenda. Prior to the executive session, so. We'll move into executive session and, um, the executive session is under O R S one nine two point six six zero two E. And that's to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. So because there might be a motion coming from after that executive session, we are going to come back into regular session. Uh, and then into public comment and then adjourn, so. Welcome to stay, I don't know how long we'll be, but, uh. Yeah. Plus the setup, so up to you, but, uh, moving into executive session now, thank you. Good, James? All right, turn to public session at seven twenty one P M, Oak Ridge City Hall. Um, we're on item sixteen and is there? Any counselor that has a motion as a result of the executive session? Yes.
I moved to approve the city administrator writing a letter of interest for potential community forests.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Counselor Charman, seconded by Counselor Brewer. Any discussion on that motion? All right, Jack, would you call for a vote?
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Counselor Brewer.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Or Hollit.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Okay, uh, moving on to item seventeen, that's public comment. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment online? Mr. Barkley, please.
Jim Barkley, Oak Ridge, Oregon, uh, listening to the discussion about the, uh, political signs had some concerns or, or whatever I wanted to share. And Counselor Kenyon was absolutely correct until about a week and a half ago. The better for everyone signs were not per se political, um. However, a week and a half ago, a one-minute ditty. Was posted on YouTube. In the chat group and that, that made them political signs. Thank you, James, for taking the appropriate action, uh, with all those signs. But during the discussion. It was suggested that all candidates. Um, be reminded what the regulations are. And I'm gonna read something from the packet provided by the city. Elections officer to all candidates. When they collected their pa, when they got their packages. Political signs, temporary political signs shall not exceed six square feet in area for each candidate or ballot measure, such signs may be placed on private property only. Okay? And here we are, a month and a half later, James sending letters. To remind people, you know, we want to remind all candidates. Personally, I take offense to that because first off, only four candidates have posted any signs whatsoever. Three have not posted any signs. And. You know, myself included and I detest the damn things, I, I wish I didn't have, have my name on one, but they do serve a purpose. But for a five hundred dollar donor to a pack. Come out and turn it into a discussion about, uh, land use and, and ordinance eight seventy four and so on and so forth. Or that, uh, all candidates should be reminded of what the standards are when they've already been made aware of what the standards are. You know, personally, I find that offensive, if not insulting. Uh, and, and not very nonpartisan, if you will, um, from a five hundred dollar donor. But if you want to look at the history, political signs, two years ago, people were interfering, removing them. Chrissy had hers down at Daltoing, drove, driven over twice. By, you know, adult voters or candidates or their supporters or so on and so forth. Political signs have illegally appeared at a regular session of council illegally. Been illegally placed on public property two years ago. And. The signs now are, are an illegal size for political signs. The problem is not the candidates, it's the same two or three organizers and their promoters and their donors that are putting the signs. On public property.
Ten seconds, Mr. Barkley.
Displaying them at public meetings, the problem's not the candidates, it's the pack and the few people that are driving it. It's always the pack that is doing the sign violation.
Mr. Barkley.
Comes up every time, it gets old.
Time expires, Mr. Barkley.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, none heard, motion to adjourn.
I saw, Ralph.
We adjourned at seven twenty six.